Okay, I'd like to resume the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, December 8. Again, this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start in accordance with Massachusetts general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording this meeting, could I please ask you to identify yourself at this time? Okay, seeing none, the first order of business on the board's agenda this evening is the approval of three sets of minutes dated November 7, 12, and 17. I'm ready to act on all of those. Joe, I know you had some feedback that we received earlier in the day. Bill, are you set to vote?
I'm ready to go.
Okay, I'd accept motions for those minutes.
You know, I gotta find the vote list again.
No, I will move to approve the minutes dated November 7, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 12, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Bill, how about the 17?
I've got to make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 17, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, we have an item, we have a possible vote on our agenda that we are going to take up at this time, and this is actually a possible vote of the board to sign a memorandum of agreement with Teamsters Local 25, which is the Public Works staff. We are joined here this evening by Jack Manning from the Personnel Board, and I believe Mr. Andy Walsh, Union Representative for Local 25, is also joining. I do see a phone number on the participant list. If indeed that is Mr. Walsh, we welcome him to the meeting as well. Jack, what I might ask is if you would like to give an overview of the contract and the vote before the board, I would then open it up if Mr. Walsh has comments, and then open it up to the public before a vote from the board. Jack, I think you're muted.
Yeah, no, I actually tried to unmute myself several times. So it's nice to feel it actually worked this time. So thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. And if Andy's here, I hope he can identify himself somehow so we know. This is a memorandum of agreement between the town and the DPW, what we call the rank and file. The DPW has two units within its body. One is the supervisors, there's five of them, and then we have somewhere around 50, low 50s in terms of number of employees in the DPW rank and file. This is the rank and file agreement that we're speaking about. One of the things that we were attempting to do, both as a Personnel Board and specifically with the DPW, was to try to get some of these collective bargaining agreements to expire or to renew in close proximity with one another. We have a number of other units, union units in the town that expired in 19 or 20, and we were trying to get some of these agreements to come and expire closely together. So we decided, and certainly had conversations about this, that it was in the town's best interest to see if we could get an extension of the existing contract for one year, and allowing, of course, for a salary increase of 2%, which has been which has been the staple of the agreements that we've had with both the supervisors and the rank and file for the last several agreements that we've signed. And we asked the rank and file if they would agree to an extension for one year at a 2% increase. They did their negotiations. Andy Walsh was critical to that, had a number of conversations about this issue. There were asks that they certainly and will come forth with when we meet again in the middle of next year, but they did agree to an extension of one year, and we were excited to be able to do this. It was in our best interest, we felt, to get this done. And having Andy speak to his constituency, he's a persuasive guy, and was able to get agreement and signatures on a one-year extension at 2%. And that's what we're presenting to you here tonight for your signature. There was some concern about COVID. That was answered through some terrific work by Tom Mayo, working with Randy Sylvester. And once we were able to assure the good folks over in the DPW that we would protect them, if you will, they were ready to go and signed off on the 2% one-year extension. It's, these are, you know, I'm honored to represent the town and sitting across from both Andy and the gentleman who sit down and bargain with us. They're critical to the success of this town in many respects. As fire and police are out there doing the hard work for every person in this town, the DPW is doing the same thing. Yes, it's different work, but they are in the front lines. They have to show up every day. And, you know, it's a group that you can admire. And sitting across from them and bargaining with them, when you admire the passion that they bring to the table and the work that they do, it's easy to make the other side understand that we appreciate the work that they do, and we truly do. And when you come to the table and you have someone like Andy Walsh on the other side who represents these units, you can come to common ground because everyone understands we're trying to do this with their interests in mind and the interests of the town, and that's pretty important. So that's the way we did this negotiation. It was very successful. It didn't take a tremendous amount of time, but we wanted to make sure that the town was well represented, and I believe we have. And obviously, Andy wanted to make sure that his unit was well represented, and I believe they were. So we're looking forward to negotiations in 2021. I'm sure there'll be a robust conversation when we have to, you know, get into the meat and potatoes of those negotiations, but this was successfully done, and I'm proud of the work that we did.
Thank you, Jack. I've also been notified that Mr. Walsh actually has another commitment that's running late, and so he has indicated to the board that he won't be joining us this evening, but I would just echo, Jack, with every negotiation that you do, you always speak to the great partnership that you have, and in particular, Andy's professionalism and demeanor, which really is allowing all parties to work collaboratively and constructively towards a win-win agreement. So while he is not here, I would just note that the board's appreciation for his continued efforts. Joe, anything to add or any questions for Jack?
No, I've read the agreement. There are only two changes. Extends the date from July 1, 2020 through June 30 of 2021, and there's the 2% wage increase, and everything else is the same. This is exactly what we need, and really, thank you, Jack, and thanks to the Public Works staff for everything they do for the town.
Thank you.
That's all.
Bill, anything to add?
I have nothing to add, Mary. Thank you. All my questions were answered in the executive session.
Is there anyone in the public who either has a question or wishes to make a comment about this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll move to authorize the signing of the memorandum of agreement with Teamsters Local 25 Public Work Staff effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jack, thank you, and thanks to you and to all the members of the Personnel Board for all the work you've done on all of the collective bargaining agreements during this very unusual year.
Well, Mary, Joe, Bill, thank you very much. Tom, Michelle, I couldn't have done it without the tremendous effort that you gave to support myself and the Personnel Board, and I thank you all.
Great. Our next agenda item is a public hearing on the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 660 feet of 2-inch gas main in Burr Road. I see that we are joined by Mary Mulroney of National Grid. My understanding is that our town engineer, Mr. Frye, is double booked this evening, and he's on another meeting. So, Mary, I think what I'd like to do is to recognize you at this point and ask if you could please just give an overview of the request prior to taking any questions from my colleagues. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for your time. Yes, National Grid would like to install and maintain approximately 660 feet of 2-inch plastic from the end of the main at 24 Burr Road to the end of the main at 50 Burr Road, and it's all to replace 660 feet of 2-inch bare steel, which is dated back to 1927 in Burr Road. It's just, they're being proactive, you know, they want to eliminate as much old pipe as they can, so this is just a section that they see that they can come in and replace the pipe.
Thank you. Joe, questions?
God bless you.
Thank you. As I'm sneezing.
No, I've gone through the list of special provisions that our town engineer, J.R. Frye, listed, and they cover the issues that we would typically want to make sure are addressed in terms of a pre-construction meeting, proper traffic control, you know, all trenches will be saw cut, and, you know, the work area to be left clean at the end of each workday, dust control. So all of the items that we would typically be concerned about have been addressed in the town engineer's memo, so I'm satisfied with this. Thank you.
Bill?
Mary, the only thing I'd ask is that Burr Road sometimes accommodates to the full parking for Town Hall. I know that Town Hall is closed right now, but I still see people kind of park on that road. If you, I'd ask that if you could try to do the section of the road that would, may or may impact our little parking spot there first, or in the evening hours, that would be appreciated.
Mary, would you like to respond?
Well, I would like to respond. So I, I'm just saying, I wouldn't imagine that you'd want it, National Grid out there in the evening, if you could avoid it, but it's only 660 feet of pipe. It shouldn't take that long, but if there's a section that you want to remain open, like how many parking spots is it?
Well, how long would it take? Will it take?
You know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this is just a guess, but probably, and I'm gonna err on the side of caution with weather, no more than 10 days. I don't, I don't, I mean, they'll just come in and in and out. 660 feet is not that large, so I can't imagine, but they will, they will work with your area. Where is it that you're?
So, yeah, so Town Hall is closed right now, but occasionally, like cars do park on the side of Burr Road, people who go to the field or play basketball down there. I mean, I just was driving there the other day, and I saw cars on the side of the road. And I just know that, that sometimes people park there, was kind of wondering if you could do that area first or quicker, if possible. 10 days seems like a lot for me to do 660 feet.
I know. I said, I said that only because, like, if it rains for three days, or, you know, I always, I'd rather say more than less, and then me tell you, oh, it's only going to take three days, and then you'll be looking for me.
All right, well, that makes sense. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So where is the, what number is the Town Hall that you're concerned about?
Um, Bill, is it the area along by the field that abuts the?
There's a big sign on it, it says Town Hall. Yeah, it's right there. It's that parking lot right there.
I know, I'm just looking at our maps, and I don't, I don't see it on our maps.
Mary, it's the, it's right at the intersection of Central and Burr is where the entrance to Town Hall is. I think of most of the parking that Selectman Ramsey is referring to is, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but is up around the tennis courts in the back of the field. That lines, that lines regularly with cars. So it's, and it's a bit of a walk for them to park in Town Hall parking lot and walk up through the fields, but it can be done. They might, it's just a potential inconvenience for them. So something to be aware of, for sure.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. I will note that, and also will be posted as well.
When will this work be done?
I believe is, if we get the grant, they'll apply for permit, and whether providing, we'll be able to just start it.
Bill, Mary, do you mind if I jump in? I'm sorry.
Please.
Be doing this. Bill, the, you know what we could do is post something on the website through, through the nos and notices section that lets people know that if Burr Road is closed, they can park in Town Hall parking lot and walk up through the, behind the baseball field.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Good idea. Okay. I read through all the packet, and everything looked in order. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to this grant of location hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 660 feet of 2-inch gas main in Burr Road. Gas main will originate at the intersection with Burr Street connecting into the existing 2-inch gas main, and continue westerly on Burr Road to westerly terminus at approximately number 24 Burr Road, and easterly on Burr Road to easterly terminus at approximately number 52 Burr Road. This gas main will replace an existing 2-inch bare steel main that is approximately 93 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated November 30, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Great. Mary, thank you so much. If we don't, if, 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 if we don't see you at an upcoming meeting, happy holidays, happy new year, and thanks to you and National Grid for all the great work you've done with the Town of Hingham in particular over the last several months when conditions have been less than ideal. We appreciate your continuing to do the work while, while keeping members of your team safe. So thank you.
Yes, and thank you too, and happy holidays to everyone, and have a healthy 2021.
We hope that for all of us. Thank you. Before going to our next agenda item, I neglected to say something at the start of the open session resuming, which is that the board, among our possible votes this evening, we are going to defer the renewal of the annual alcoholic beverages licenses until our meeting next Tuesday. So if there's anyone on who is interested in that portion of the agenda, we will be taking that up on the 15th. Our next agenda item is to authorize the purchase of the property at 335 Lincoln Street. I know that we're joined by Real Estate Council Susan Murphy. Tom, did you want to just give the board an overview here?
Sure, so you may have heard.
I know we have a vote.
Yes, so you may have heard that there's something going on over at 335 Lincoln. And no, I'm kidding. As we all know, Town Meeting took up recently, and a special Town Meeting. Question as to whether or not the town should purchase property located at 335 Lincoln Street for the potential use of a, of a new joint public safety facility. That, that, that article on, that special Town Meeting passed, and we're now engaged in the process of closing on that property. And our Real Estate Council Susan Murphy is on the phone, who is leading that effort. Susan?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know if you had any specific questions.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
The purchase and, yep, the purchase and sale agreement called for a closing December 30th, but once the approval came through on special Town Meeting, and I touched base with the seller's council, it didn't, it wasn't necessary to take all the way till December 30th to complete all of this, and given the intervening holidays, the seller's council said the seller would be interested in closing before the holidays, if possible. So we have a tentative closing date of next Thursday, December 17th, has been scheduled. At this time, all the usual, you know, steps that you need to go through to get to a closing are underway, draft, you know, the closing documents, getting the title finalized for title, for the title policy and the survey, et cetera, and those are all moving along as needed and on schedule for a closing next Thursday. Tonight's vote, tonight's vote would be the, you know, official necessary vote of the Board of Selectmen to accept a deed to the property, and also to authorize Mary Power as the chair to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the board and the town to effectuate the closing. I've already been in touch with Jean Montgomery, so she's aware of the timing, and, you know, to the extent any other town officials need to be in the loop on the scheduling, everybody's aware of the coming date.
Okay. Joe, any questions for Susan?
Yes, just a couple. Susan, first, really thank you for all your effort here. This is not an easy transaction. I really appreciate your incredible attention, just to make sure that this is all going on time. Am I correct that we're getting, that there'll be a title insurance policy issued on the property?
Yes, the title, the title to the shipyard is very complicated. It is registered land, but the, the number of exceptions that go back to when it was a shipyard, and then all of the ways that the property was broken up over many decades, has made it very complicated. The survey is one of the more complicated surveys that I've, you know, reviewed in a while. So it is recommended that the town obtain title insurance. It's a one-time cost to the town, and then it's just, so if there is anything that would appear in the title that could interfere with the development of the parcel that we weren't aware of that would be in the title, then the town has insurance to cover the costs associated to sorting that out.
No, I think that's a good move. I just wanted to confirm that we're doing. And do you, is there anything that you see over the next week that could be a hiccup here that might cause a delay in the closing?
I don't see anything. The, there's documenta, as you know, there was a right of first refusal on the property and a related, some related recording documents, but the, the attorney for that party is fully engaged, and that party is actually going to get money from the seller, not from the town, but from the seller, in connection with resolving all of that. So everybody's, I think, on board with all the necessary documentation to get it in place. So just because there's some third-party documents that need to come in, discharges, those type of things, every once in a while, you can get a delay in a document showing up, but it, right now, it looks like everything's on track, and I'm not anticipating a delay.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Bill?
No, just refreshing, Mary, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan, for your work.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Yes, Susan, thank you. You've kept the board updated on all this. I will make myself available to sign documents as necessary next week. And, you know, I think it's a good idea to move forward on this and, you know, get, get the transaction completed before the holidays. Is there anyone in the public who either has a question or wishes to make a comment before the board votes to authorize the purchase of the property at 335 Lincoln Street? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
I'll move, as authorized by the 2020 Special Town Meeting on November 21, 2020, and subject to satisfaction by the seller of the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement dated June 25, 2020, between the town and 291 Mystic LLC. The board accept a deed to the property located at 335 Lincoln Street, authorize the payment of the purchase price and all closing costs required in connection therewith, and authorize the chair of the board to execute all documents and to take all actions necessary and proper to effectuate the purchase of the property.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. And Susan, thank you, and Tom and Michelle, you've done yeoman's work to, to get the town to this point. And as we set a Town Meeting, the purchase of the property gives the town options to address some longstanding facility needs at a fire station within the police station, and that paved the way, as Bill Ramsey spoke about this afternoon so eloquently, you know, a new senior center as well. So this is, you know, this is giving us options, and it's a, it's a very important step for the town. Okay, next item of business on our agenda is an update on the discussion of the proposed MBTA ferry and Green Bush commuter rail service cuts. Joe, is this you? I know there was a call today. I know there've been some developments, and I'm not sure if this is you or if this is Tom.
This is me. So the MBTA's Fiscal and Management Control Board met on Monday, December 7, and the board had planned to hear and consider the MBTA's proposed reductions in service, including reductions in the Green Bush train service and possible elimination of the Hingham Hall ferry service. So at that meeting on Monday, the MBTA General Manager announced that they were not prepared to make their recommendations on Monday. So the new date for announcements from the MBTA is next Monday, December 14. However, I can report to you that it was clear from comments made by Stephanie Pollak, who's the Secretary of the Department of Transportation, and by board members of the Fiscal and Management Control Board, that it is unlikely that the ferry service will be totally eliminated. There is recognition by all, by all board members, I believe, of the importance of the ferry and Green Bush line to Hingham, to Hall, and to our neighboring communities. So December 14 is the meeting when there will be a definitive announcement from the MBTA. So at the meeting on December 14, and all, all are encouraged to attend, the MBTA is planning to make a five-point presentation. First, they plan on giving a complete summary of the public comments that were received over the past month. Second, they will make their service proposal for approval by the board. Third, they will do a, they will be preparing a plan for, it's called a Title VI Equity Analysis and Environmental Review of the Proposed Service Changes. Next, there'll be a plan for customer outreach on implementation of what's being proposed. And then finally, the MBTA will have a discussion on how they plan to re-add service and rebuild when the time comes and when the COVID conditions allow for an increase and return of the ridership. So that's all scheduled to happen next Monday, the 14th of December.
Thank you. Bill, any questions or comments?
So you said it's not likely that the ferry will be eliminated. We've got, the ferry service will remain, so it's probably reduced. Did I hear you correctly?
You did. I can barely hear you, though, Bill.
Okay. I want to clarify what you said about the ferry service.
So, so there were no commitments, since there was no official recommendation, but the language coming from the Secretary and from other board members made it clear that they were not interested in a total elimination of the ferry and in any further reductions in the Green Bush line. So the MBTA is, you know, will be, is currently formulating their proposal, which will be announced on the 14th, but all signs indicate that unlike their prior proposal, which had a total elimination of the Hingham and Hall ferry service, that they have rethought that, and I believe that there will not be that total elimination. The, the community outpouring of comments, support for ferry and Green Bush, the explanations of how that would adversely affect Hingham, Hall, and our neighboring towns if they're the explanations of how that would adversely affect uh Hingham, Hull, and our neighboring towns if there were terminations or severe cuts, they heard the message. Um, and I think they're acting to revise their initial plan.
Joe, thanks for putting a point on that, and thanks to everybody in the community who who um, you know, who voiced their concerns. I think that is really, that's really good news, very good news.
Yeah, I I would just add, um, you know, Joe, and as as you were, um, you know, serving as the point person for the board on the public safety facility, um, this came up and we said, oh, who's the liaison for transportation? Joe! Um, so you know, you were, you you've been um, you've been the point person on two very important initiatives for the town and um, you know, I I, Bill and I are very grateful. The citizens are grateful. Um, you know, many people were involved. I think I saw a post last night that seven thousand phone calls were registered about the ferry.
That's right.
Um, I know at the public meeting that we all attended. Um, my understanding was that the number of people who attended the South Shore meeting was twice as high as it was for any other community. So, you know, uh, the the team effort of of many, many different people um to make the case, uh, you know, hopefully next week we will hear some good things. Uh, I would, you know, while there's so many people that have been involved in this, um, I I just wanna um, recognize, uh, first of all, our State Representative Joan Moschino, who um, helped mobilize and engage people um and coordinate efforts at many different levels. And, you know, within Hingham, Martha Buick has been working tirelessly on this effort. And um, I I would just say that, you know, for me, uh, seeing citizens like Martha who get engaged, who are passionate, who um continue to fight the good fight for the ferry for many, many years, um, I think is uh just a great example of volunteerism in the community. And um, I I find when I see people who are that engaged, um, it's personally inspiring to me. So uh, hopefully next Tuesday, Joe, you'll be able to report back some specific, some specifics, but um, it's it's good to hear this is going in the right direction.
It is going. And I would also add that, you know, our other um elected uh officials, including Senator Patrick O'Connor, they've really been very active uh in advocating for the South Shore uh and the selectmen in our neighboring towns have all been very active. So really, thanks to all of them.
Yeah.
And Mary, do you mind if I just jump in for a second?
Please.
Right, and we don't do this often enough, but um, all of these, all of you volunteers, the three of you are volunteers, and I think sometimes that goes, you know, un- unrecognized by the world as volunteer, the, you know, selectmen and others are volunteers in other towns. Fifteen um fifteen meetings, um several um press conferences, um explanation meetings between Joe, myself, and Michelle, as uh Joe updates us and we him on efforts. Uh, we're talking hundreds of hours on these and other issues that you all regularly engage in. Uh, I just think that the public should should know that that's the level of dedication um that we get from our board and and other towns get from theirs. I just wanted to thank Joe for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Here, here. Uh, any um, any members of the public uh have any questions about this agenda item? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, the next item of business is the COVID nineteen update. Tom, are we starting with you tonight?
I think so, yep.
Okay.
All right, so bear with me. There's a lot to report. Uh, I am muted, right? I am unmuted, yes. Uh, so as of yesterday, the Mass Department of Public Health is reporting two hundred and fifty thousand twenty-two total confirmed COVID nineteen cases in Massachusetts, of which sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four are in Plymouth County. As of Friday, Hingham is in the state's yellow COVID nineteen category with five hundred and fifty-one total cases, compared to three hundred and fifty-two total cases two months ago, and an average daily incidence rate of twenty-four point four per one hundred thousand people over the prior fourteen days, compared to a rate of six point three per one hundred thousand people two months ago. Today, Governor Baker announced a statewide return to Phase Three Step One of the Massachusetts reopening plan, as well as some additional restrictions that become effective on December thirteenth. These include reducing indoor capacities across a broad range of sectors, limiting outdoor gatherings to fifty people or less, requiring patrons at restaurants to wear masks at all times, except when eating and drinking, so not just sitting at their dining tables. Um, number four, uh, limiting restaurant tables to six patrons and ninety-minute visits, and requiring that all gym patrons, gym patrons, wear masks at all times. Uh, we ask that you please visit the DPH website for detailed guidance. The administration announced the rollback to respond to an increase in, this rollback to respond to an increase in new COVID nineteen infections and hospitalizations since Thanksgiving that is straining the healthcare system in Massachusetts. Last week, we announced that Hingham is partnering with Empathy LLC to establish a COVID nineteen testing site at three oh eight Cushing Street. The testing site will open on Thursday, December tenth, and will operate Monday through Saturdays from seven AM to four PM. The hours of seven AM and to ten AM on each testing day are reserved for Town of Hingham residents and employees. Please visit empathy.org, that's M, the letter M, P A T H Y dot O R G so forward slash schedule to make an appointment online, which you can do several days and even weeks in advance. The town is engaging in the use of the town property at three oh eight Cushing Street for these purp- uh, for these purposes via a short-term temporary license, as we have done elsewhere in town. The testing site can accommodate twenty scheduled appointments per hour, plus walk-ins, although walk-ins will have to wait longer than those with scheduled appointments. COVID nineteen testing will be available for people of all ages, including children. Uh, asymptomatic individuals and individuals without health insurance will need to pay a fee of one hundred and forty dollars via credit or debit card to receive a test. Symptomatic individuals who have health insurance will be billed through their health insurance provider. Please make sure to wear a mask and bring your ID, a health insurance card, and a credit, a credit or debit card to the testing site. We will not be accepting cash or check. Testing will be conducted indoors in a well-ventilated space at three oh eight Cushing Street. This will not be a drive-through test, uh, drive-through testing site. Individuals will need to park in the lot and queue in a socially-distanced fashion at the back entrance of the building. We will have a police detail on-site to help manage traffic and ensure that traffic does not queue onto Cushing Street. There will be two lines, one, one for those with scheduled appointments and one for walk-ins. Patients will move through the facility in one direction, exiting through the garage door at the front of the building. Test results will be sent to individuals via email, usually within two days. Questions about the Hingham COVID nineteen testing site or your test results can be directed to M, Empathy LLC at info at empathy dot org. And again, that's empathy is the letter M, P A T H Y dot O R G. We are seeing a a concerning increase in COVID nineteen cases and hospitalizations across the state. So please stay vigilant as we head into winter. As always, please wear a mask whenever you're in public. Do your best to remain at least six feet apart from others, and avoid large gatherings, and wash your hands frequently. Um, Mary, I'd like to also point out that we um, we just recently went through our second town meeting uh in during this pandemic. And through very careful and extensive planning, we were able to hold that gathering um without any transmission of the, of of COVID nineteen, in large part because we were so stringent on social distancing and wearing masks and use of of um, of hand sanitizer. Uh, so please, this stuff does work. These meth, we've been talking about, you hear it nationally all, all the time. I really hope that the public starts to take that seriously and understands that that is what's gonna get us through this pandemic in uh, in in as as well as we can make it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, did you have anything to add this evening?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, and uh, Joe, any questions for Tom?
Well, that was a very thorough report, and I I appreciate you pointing out, you know, what's essential here, and testing is one of the essential elements. Um, and um, I'm really glad that uh, the Town of Hingham has responded to the needs of Hingham in in a way that um really addresses that concern. So, thank you, Tom.
Bill? Okay, um, thank you. I um, I was just looking on my phone because I had gotten a question earlier in the day and I'm hope I'm gonna a- ask the right uh, the right question. The question was, um, when, when people come, if you are, if if you indicate that you are symptomatic and it gets billed through your insurance, um, will you have to demonstrate in any way that you're symptomatic? In other words, how, like, how, how's that gonna work? Will they take your temperature or, you know, the sort of question was, how will the testers know whether someone is symptomatic or asymptomatic? Is it self-reported or is there some other way that that happens?
Um, so I I don't know the answer. Uh, Joe or Michelle, I'm not sure if you heard that answer in all of our discussions with Jackson.
Yeah, so they have trained staff on-site uh that will take people who go through through a series of questions. Um, and uh, there will be procedures that they will make a determination about whether or not you are symptomatic or not.
Mm-hmm.
Many, many of which is self-reported.
Yeah, and are sind, are there, are there individual lines for symptomatic and asymptomatic people or because everyone will be ten feet apart? Okay.
If you classify yourself as asymptomatic, you'd be in one line if you, I think that's right, Tom. Is that?
I know, it's, it's, it's for appointments and non.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Appointments and walk-ins. Uh, but that said, we are, just so everyone knows, um, while you may be queued uh in a line with people that are symptomatic and others that are asymptomatic, we are setting our spacing not at six feet, but at, uh, I believe, ten feet.
Yeah, we're assuming everybody's, we're, we're, we are organizing it to assume that everybody is symptomatic. Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, and I think uh, next week at our, at our meeting on Tuesday, we will have had three days' experience with it. So I think we're all looking forward to hearing about the numbers, about the lessons learned. Um, I, and um, I would also just thank our media partners um, who have helped get the word out, uh, both within the community uh and in in the surrounding areas. Um, is there any member of the public who has a a question with respect to the COVID nineteen update? Okay, seeing none. Uh, next item of business, uh, our appointments. Uh, I I believe there's one possible appointment this evening.
I mean, I'd like to appoint, um, I'd appoint Jonathan Kirk to the Cultural Council to fill an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Uh, terrific. Um, before uh, public comment and reports, we do have uh, some votes. At this time of year is the process for um, the renewals of a lot of our licenses. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, uh, the board will not be voting. Um, we will not be voting on the alcoholic beverages licenses this evening. We still have a little bit of work to do on that, so we will be voting on those next week. Uh, this evening, we will be uh voting to renew the annual Class One and Class Two motor vehicle sales licenses, entertainment licenses, and automatic amusement device licenses. And if I remember correctly from previous years, um, the recommended motion is to renew the licenses as presented in the vote list, which means that we don't have to necessarily read them all off. So uh, uh, if if either of my colleagues have any questions on the Class One seller's agent's licenses, we could take those now. Otherwise, I'd accept a motion.
I've got no questions.
Okay, uh, Bill, you wanna make a motion on the Class One?
Yeah, you said I can do like blanket motion just to make the motion. So I would make a motion to do the Class One seller's agent licenses as presented in the vote list.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Uh, I will make a motion to renew the Class Two licenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Uh, Joe, uh, we've got entertainment licenses?
Uh, move to renew the annual entertainment licenses as presented.
Second.
And um, just before voting these, Tom and Michelle, my understanding is that the entertainment licenses and the hours are consistent with what was, with the previous year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And um, Bill, how about the um, automatic amusement device license? Which, which really sounds a little sketchy, I gotta say. I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Well, automatic amusement device licenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, uh, uh, next item is public comment. We uh, offer uh, the opportunity for items not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And uh, we would ask that any, any remarks be directed to the Chair and follow our town meeting protocol of uh, being respectful and not indulgent personalities. Uh, does anyone uh wish to make a public comment at this time? Uh, I see a hand and I recognize Ms. Sally O'Hare. Welcome.
Thank you, Sally O'Hare, thirty-six Burr Road. I apologize, but I didn't hear the actual dates of when the Burr Road gas line would go in. Were they mentioned? I didn't catch it.
Uh, Ms. O'Hare, thank you for attending. Uh, what we were told by Ms. Mulroney from National Grid was that um, with the positive outcome of the board this evening, National Grid is looking to begin that work uh within the next several days. I think they are hoping to try to complete the the um, main replacement before the weather precludes that work from happening.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will be access on the street, though?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And um, Ms. O'Hare, Ms. Mulroney did mention that um, when, when asked by a member of the board, she thought that it would um, again, with some buffer, be be no more than ten days. And it
Yes, I did, I did hear that. So hopefully that will be the case. There are a lot of cars that park on Burr Road. So maybe some warning signs could be put up just to let people know.
We can do that.
That's a good, that's a good idea, Tom. Thank you. Uh, anyone else, anyone else with a public comment? Okay, uh, seeing none, um, uh, Town Administrator reports. Michelle?
I think, thank you.
Tom?
I just wanted to let you all and the public know that uh, today uh, in a very lengthy, as you can imagine, um, command call relating to the COVID pandemic, uh, myself and the Chiefs and the Executive Health Officer and Michelle, um, we go over all of our plans in terms of our, the municipal response on a regular basis. We do this several times a week uh, and have throughout um, the the pandemic. I would let everyone know that today um is the second time that we have been discussing our preparations for uh vaccine dispersment when, when and, um, well, and I will, I will not say if, but when that that day comes. And it's coming. And the reason I I point this out is because earlier you heard me give a a pretty um, rough-to-hear uh COVID nineteen report. These numbers are scary. Uh, I hope people recognize that, you know, there is help coming. We see a light at the end of the tunnel, however distant that light may be. Um, it is there now. Uh, we're seeing this. I know they're distributing the vaccine in Europe. Um, please continue to take these these um protocols and guidelines seriously so we can get there a- as healthy as possible as, you know, community-wide. Uh, our numbers are scary. Uh, our Executive Health Officer is seeing an incredible uptick in in um, in cases in Hingham, and we just don't want that to continue, not, especially not um, when there's, when there's, you know, light at the end of the tunnel, like I said. So.
Thank you. Uh, Joe?
Uh, I just have one item, and it's really um complimenting Bill on his comments. Uh, we had a senior volunteer appreciation uh, Zoom call earlier today uh to really, to express our thanks to the many, many volunteers uh from the Senior Center. Uh, the time, the attention uh that they devote is just overwhelming, and Bill really um gave a a wonderful uh acknowledgement to those folks. Uh, so I both acknowledge them and acknowledge Bill for his, his comments. Thank you. That's it.
Here, here. You're here. Bill, anything to add?
Thank you, related, but, uh, for many years I had the, um, distinct privilege of teaching at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point on Saturday. Army plays Navy, so, uh, go Army.
My dad would agree with you.
Glad Keith isn't on the line.
I have, uh, I, I just have, uh, one thing to add, which is that, um, you know, a few, uh, you know, Christmas in the square is looking different this year than it has in past years. Uh, but, um, through the leadership of the Hingham Downtown Association, uh, and, and Lynn Barclay and all the great work she's doing, um, there are some activities that are taking place that are safe and, um, that, you know, we would invite members of the community to engage in. I would also let everyone know that the downtown merchants are open for holiday shopping on tomorrow evening, uh, Thursday, uh, excuse me, Thursday evening, two nights from now. Uh, the stores will be open late and, um, you know, given all these COVID numbers and, and understanding that widespread distribution of a vaccine, um, is still a few months away. Um, part of, part of what this community does so well in terms of how it takes care of one another is to, um, i- is to not just look out for our friends and for our neighbors, but also to help support a lot of the local businesses who are run by our friends and our neighbors. Um, I would also note that many of the merchants are offering online shopping and curbside pickup. So they are working hard to, um, to create a, a safe shopping environment. Um, and so we would, we would encourage you to, um, continue to, to patronize them. Um, and actually, there is, there is one other thing because, uh, the people in my house will be upset with me if I don't say this, but, um, an important holiday tradition here in Hingham is that Boy Scout Troop 1, uh, runs a fundraiser in which they pick up, uh, Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts in the Hingham community, uh, pick up Christmas trees, uh, at the end of the season. And, um, uh, in, in return for doing so, they ask for a $10 donation. Uh, it's an optional donation. But for people who are interested, you can visit the website, www.hinghamtreedrive.org. And you can reserve a date for the pickup of your tree. Um, with COVID this year, the, the logistics of that are a little bit more complicated. So we would urge community members to make a reservation sooner than later so that you can take advantage of this great service. Um, anyone have anything else?
Mary?
Joe?
I was remiss. Um, this Thursday evening is the first night of Hanukkah. And traditionally, um, Jews gather and they light the menorah this year. Very difficult to have gathering, uh, so the synagogue in Hingham, there will be a drive-by lighting of a, uh, of the menorah. Um, but I would wish, uh, all in the community a happy Hanukkah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, our next scheduled meeting will be next Tuesday, December 15th. Um, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.